Good evening, the time is just a hair past six o'clock. We're ready to begin the work session, September 6, 2011. Work session again starts at 6:00 PM and it's typically held before each of the regularly slated board meetings. Tonight, the first item is Wildwood Lake request. Status update from Andy Noel, our Public Works Director. Andy?
Thank you Mayor. We've been discussing some items with Wildwood Lake for, I think since February, March. I outlined some of the activities that we have made to date with Wildwood Lake where we've been discussing some of the several issues that they have. A lot of it starts with algae and then the depth of the lake comes into play with the algae on there and then also sediment in the lake. The Wildwood Lake does serve as a, does help with the storm water infrastructure of the city by reducing some of the peak flow through the area. However, it would not be our first choice at this point for maintenance reasons because any lake established in this region will have problems with sedimentation and any new facility built, you have to accommodate for that sedimentation in our new design requirements. When this facility was installed, it may not have been of, as a, at the forefront of their minds. So, we've been discussing that, started talking with the gentleman who did leave the community. So, there were several months where no communication was happening between myself and Wildwood Lake Homeowners Association, but did start, restart that recently with Mr. Kinman. Had some discussions, went out there and met him and then drove around the lake and pointed out a few items that we discussed. One was that the outlets of some of the storm sewer that come into that lake, there's about five or six areas where storm water pipes come into the lake, not just one. We have, the largest one is on the west side end where there's a reinforced concrete box that discharges into the lake. Most of them are on, or I guess a majority of them are on the north side of the lake where storm water enters the lake, anywhere from 24-inch to 30-inch round pipes. There is some buildup of sediment at the outlets of those pipes that we can clean. We've tried to get that on there. I don't believe we've, we have not accomplished that at this point. Still need to get those done and then some trash at those outlets that are getting caught in some of that debris that we're still, are on our schedule to get clean. At that time, we also discussed a thought that Mr. Kinman proposed to help with the sedimentation of the basin. His thought was they could lower the level of the lake during the dry season to where they can reach the sediment that is accumulating in the west edge of the basin, or the west edge of that lake. And then they could use what is called a long-reach track hoe. Basically, you can just reach further than your, a normal track hoe. And then utilize that to remove the sediment in one area, dig a, dig it as deep as they could and then that would create a hole, a depression where the rest of the sediment then would naturally try to fill in that depression and lower the level of the sediment in the bottom of the basin and maybe do that year after year or semi-annually, whatever made sense after we could determine what kind of progress would, had been made at that first attempt. His request at that time was that the city participate in that by providing the trucking and a disposal site. Discussing, he said that might be possible, but we would have to get some approval through the board. And then also needed to research some permits that might be required to do that from environmental compliance issues. The first item that came up I was concerned about was simply dredging it from the lake and if that required a permit itself. Talked with the Corps of Engineers and also Department of Natural Resources. Finally got a conclusion early last week that it doesn't require a permit to dredge the material out of the lake, but that it does require to remove some of the sediment, especially if they use the long-reach backhoe. That does not require a permit in itself, but the disposal of the sediment, that is where a permit would be required. So, if it didn't go to a permitted landfill, say a sanitary landfill for cover, that you would have to go get a land disturbance permit through the Department of Natural Resources and just to make sure that you are taking care of erosion and sediment control, you have a proper grading plan. And then also, they were somewhat concerned about what type of, what is actually in that sediment. Is there any pollutants or anything of that nature? They just want to make, they said they've had that issue in the past and sometimes they require that to be tested before it can be placed in another, another location. So, we found out that there is a requirement for permits on that issue, however, it doesn't, it's not as onerous as I first thought it might be for those permits. And then it comes down to the funding of those items in our discussion with Mr. Kinman. It was, he informed me that it is very expensive to dredge a lake with that natural dredge material, dredging machine, which I am not that familiar with that process. Then, and that's why they arrived at the idea of a long-reach backhoe. And they said they had enough funds to do that, but they weren't sure that they had enough funds for trucking. At that point, they hadn't received any firm bids for that type of work. And I was just here to discuss these items with the board, get your feeling of what you think the city's responsibility should be. And then also, there may be some other avenues that maybe the city can help with the board in terms of maybe helping strengthen the homeowners' association. We researched some items that may be able to help with that, but I don't think we have a definitive answer at this point. I think we need to have some more discussions with homeowners' association about strengthening their position, maybe through a CID or an NID that might have more teeth to it so that they can generate more funds to take care of that and maybe with implementation of a, it's called a neighborhood improvement district or community improvement district, I believe is the correct terms. We've discussed that some in the past week at the staff level to determine if that might be a helpful situation. Because when older areas with homeowners' associations, it's not exactly voluntary, but if people don't pay their dues on a voluntary basis, it's very hard to force them to pay those dues. And with, from my understanding is the Wildwood, a homeowners' association has a lot of participation or mainly, the vast majority of their participation is from the south side of the lake, very little of it is from the north side of the lake. If they might be able to form a community improvement district or neighborhood improvement district that included the north side, the south side, but that would require, there are certain levels of participation that we would have to research and discuss that with the homeowners' association. But formation of either of those districts would give the ability to either, to have an assessment on the properties so that everybody in the area would be paying for it, or an actual property tax. And there's, there's pros and cons to each of those. And I think that might be the next discussion item with the homeowners' association if the city doesn't feel that it's actually their responsibility to participate significantly in the removal of sediment from the lake. Here to answering any other questions.
Mr. Ertz?
Couple of questions to start with. What is the problem with naturally occurring algae?
I, I think it comes from just the visual appearance. And if you get too much algae, you could have, any fish in there could be compromised. Other than that, aquatics is not my strong point, so.
And then we probably don't have, okay, we'll just leave it at that until we, if we need to find out, I guess that's different.
Okay.
I also would think that, just from my line of work, that to find any place to dump any significant amount of anything in this town is very expensive. I mean, has anybody roughly thought about how many loads this would be or how much thousands of dollars that would be just for the, if you could find a place that would accept it?
Right now, we, we bring what spoils we have back to the public works facility, but it's usually limited to a very small truck. And we'll accumulate three or four of those and then we take it to the, seeing it's a construction debris landfill operated west of 435. And we take it there and it's.
Fifty bucks a load or a hundred or something like that?
Yes, it adds up fairly quickly, especially if you're talking, you know, a days or couple of days worth of trucks running continuously. And then also the idea, the concern of how do we keep, because it's going to be a wet mixture of sediment and water, how do we keep that mud from spilling out onto the road as we're traveling? Or how would we de-water it where we wouldn't have that issue? Currently, I'd.
Have they looked into a place closer down there on the other side of the dam or anything like that?
Haven't looked onsite at Wildwood Lake if there was an area where we could take it, so we would, I'd need to discuss that further with the homeowners' association.
Around down there, it's always a very pretty neighborhood, very nice character homes in that area, but it is a private lake. I didn't see anything. In fact, I saw a lot of, you know, no trespassing and things like that signs, you know, on some of the accesses down there. So, I don't know if it's civic, but I would think that a CID would be a good choice in my mind, from what you had to say so far, as to a way that they could get the entire neighborhood to help pay for the improvements to the lake.
Mr. Lightfoot?
I was curious, how often in the past, if ever, has, has the lake been dredged or a major cleanup? Has this happened reoccurringly since the lake was made or is it something that has built up over all these years?
I've been made aware of that. I know it has been dredged in the past. I don't know the exact date that it's been dredged. And I know there's been two times where they had to make some dam repairs to the dam itself, where they did special assessments of the property owners and made some repairs to the dam. I'm not sure of the city's participation in, if any, in those efforts. I wouldn't say that we haven't, but I'm not sure that we have either and to what extent that we have participated in the past.
Well, I read a couple instances in the write-up here that it's, you know, the lake is more of an amenity to the surrounding property owners rather than a storm water control structure. I wouldn't think the city's probably been involved in the past. Has the homeowners' association brought you estimates, costs? Have they looked into it for themselves as far as what a contractor would charge to do the job? Have they been, or are they just looking on you to do that?
They had some estimates that were just verbal estimates at that point. I didn't see anything in writing that they provided to me. I haven't specifically asked for them for a written estimate at this point. I think they were talking in generalities. I think they had some discussions with contractors so they knew the general cost of that long-reach excavator. But other than that, I don't, I'm not sure they have any written specifications and something for everybody to put a cost estimate to, but I think they have some, they have a general idea of how much they want to spend and how much they can do at that point.
Not that this would be something that you've probably been dealing with, but you did mention that a certain amount of the homeowners are not participating in the association or paying their dues. Do you happen to know a percentage of how many homeowners in that area are participating and paying their dues?
No, I don't know that percentage. It was just from a discussion with Mr. Kinman saying that it's, the number seems to be getting smaller and they have very little participation from houses on the north side of the lake. It's mainly from houses on the south side.
Mr. Mark is next.
Well, I would really like to see a written estimate on this, you know, for the trucking, trackhoe or anything else before we get even looking, getting involved into it if we do. From my understanding, it was dredged in 1980, but I can go back and check on that too. I know there's a couple of people here tonight and maybe they possibly could look into that. I could look into that also. The CID research, the items would be great if we could possibly work with them on that. I know I had discussion today about that with Mr. Benson also. Myself and Mr. Noel, what, when did we go out there? In February was it of this year?
Yes.
We identified, oh, I think we identified like seven different inlets into this lake?
There were quite a few.
Okay. At that time, I know there was no algae problem. I just witnessed the algae about a month and a half ago myself by driving around the lake and looking. But I think that would be it for now, but I would like to see a written estimate on the work to be, to be done. The trucks and the hauling of the dump trucks and this and that, it is quite a feat to be doing this. I know I've been around it. And the only thing is, what about the lagoon? If we, the lagoon itself takes the sediment to if there possibly would be enough room down there?
Lagoon, can you tell me which, off of 87?
Eighty Seventh Street.
Access in and out of that's very limited. It's gravel. I'm not sure a loaded dump truck could probably make it down. I'm not sure an empty truck is going to make, I'm not sure he's going to make it out of there.
Okay.
And when we look around, that's in the, I just don't know that there's much area that we don't utilize for the equalization basin.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion.
Okay.
Thanks.
Ms. Melson?
In Ms. Whitman's letter, it references this lake as a de facto storm water retention basis, actually it's basin. And then also, you made reference to it about this facility. Is there any concrete evidence to say that Wildwood Lake was to be utilized as a storm retention basin?
I'm not aware of any. Doesn't mean that it's not there. It does reduce the peak storm water flow, just simply by being a lake. To what extent and how effective it is, I don't, I haven't researched it significantly at this point. It would depend on the outlet structure and how, what size it is, things of that nature and how much volume it can store above the normal water surface elevation. So, I don't, we don't, I believe we do not count on it as a storm water detention structure in our storm water master plan. I'd have to verify that though.
So, we don't know how much in a significant rainfall is carried through that lake?
No, we know how much is going through. You have a peak flow coming into the lake and you have a peak flow going out. I don't know how much of a reduction takes place in that lake, because it really depends on the outlet structures. And I, I was not able to find any as-bills and didn't go out in the field and take measurements on the actual size of the outlet structure and then how much, what would be freeboard that would be available to store that water to reduce that peak. So, I don't know how effective the lake is as a storm water detention facility.
Okay. Also in here, in the very last line about the precedent the city would set by doing this, what would be the long-term expectation if we were to do this? Ten years again, they would come back saying, you guys put more storm water in here, the silt's, you know, raised up, you got to do it again?
That very well could be and also other facilities as well, such as, there's a Lake Ong Lake that's as part of the, so there could be other locations throughout the city where they say you have done the same thing, you need to come and dredge this facility as well. So, that's where I'm a little concerned about. You do it in one area, I think you should be expected to do it in quite a few areas unless there's some really extenuating circumstances for one particular location.
And that was my next question, is that there are another couple, I know of the one lake that might have that same concern to come back and say, you cleaned theirs up, why don't you clean ours up?
Exactly.
So, do we know any of the cost expectation as in numbers that is expected from the city?
No, not at this time. We talked about maybe one day, two days. There wasn't a real, we haven't finalized that amount. What I wanted to do was come to you and discuss, after I got this letter, I wanted to make sure we just had an opportunity to discuss this. We don't have any hard, you know, concrete cost estimates. We haven't sought out any cost estimates of how much the homeowners' association would be spending, how much they want us to utilize as well. I think what they were requesting is the utilization of city employees and city vehicles.
Right.
So, it would be the, the time of our employees' wear and tear and fuel on, as well as a disposal cost, because I just don't know where we would take it and then how we would get it there without making a mess the entire direct, you know, getting there. That's, that would be a challenge of, how do we dispose of this material without making a mess along the city streets, getting there?
One of the things that also is mentioned in that letter about the trash and debris and you also referenced that in your comments, is there a concrete plan to go and clean up, I think it was the pipes and to clear out the trash and clean those pipes?
Yeah, what we were offering and we think we can do is utilize our, we have a vacuum truck that can pick up and remove sediment and trash just from around the outlets to make sure they're free-flowing and that it doesn't accumulate right there.
Okay. And is there a timeline on that? I mean, in the next month, two months?
Yeah, within the next month, we can, I know we can get that done.
Okay. So, one thing that we, with this is within the next month, two months to have that trash and debris which is blocking some of, is that an inlet or a pipe or?
I don't know that, I wouldn't say it's, I wouldn't classify it as blocking. It is somewhat impeding because it is built up, but it's not where it's more than, I don't believe any of them are built up where it covers more than a third of the pipe. So, it's, it's not where it's blocking, but it is somewhat of a nuisance and then it contributes to more sediment at that particular area and trash getting caught at that particular area. So, if we had it completely clean, it'd be less apt to catch anything that came down the pipe at that point.
Okay. I think that's all I have for right now.
Mr. Hamilton?
I've been Secretary Treasurer of Lakewood Estates Homes Association for many years and we have the same problems in our smaller lake. And about, I don't know, 15 or 18 years ago, we approached the city with this same or a similar proposition. And we were turned down for a numerous, number of reasons, financial, et cetera, and primarily for not wanting to set a precedent. And I would say to you now, if, if the city's going to consider this application, this proposal and approve it, then you can be assured that our Homes Association will be back making a similar request.
Mr. Van Bostkirk?
Mr. Noel, you may not have the answers to my questions that I'm asking, but you may have that information. I have to wonder if the homeowners in that area would not have some legal obligation or contractual agreement when they purchased their home in the area towards the homeowners' association. And if that is the case, is, is there the possibility of legal leverage by the homeowners' association towards property owners who are not participating? Do you, do you have any information relative to that?
No, I have not researched to find out if there is a, I'm used to seeing those covenants and restrictions regarding, that are attached to specific lots that are constructed. I, I would just be simply guessing at this point if it's there. That's what I would have to go research and find out if there's covenants and restrictions on certain lots. But generally, that is what establishes the HOA and the fees and how the HOA would operate. So, I would have to do some research through the county to find out if there is any requirement that they participate in the HOA. Typically, from talking with Mr. Willis, an HOA is restricted to recouping expenses that are, or dues that people haven't paid through a lien on the property is the extent that a homeowners' association has to recoup unpaid dues from participating lots. But I don't know what extent, which lots are actually participating in or required to participate in the HOA.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Treasury?
Well, this is the situation that's been going on for years because this lake has existed for years. And I can't address all the little small lakes of Raytown. But first of all, from the very beginning of Raytown, excuse me, I'm sorry.
You bring donuts in the next meeting then.
That's perfectly okay. From the onset of when Raytown developed as a city, which is back in 1950, and we began designing our sewers and storm drains, the flow of water through downtown, starting at downtown, that really at 63rd Street, is channeled down, all the way down through that core that crosses 67th Street and feeds into Wildwood. We, we as a city have used that flow of water, the natural flow of water because of the lay of the land. This existed, you know, long before Raytown was ever founded because it was a natural flow of water. When it was dammed up and turned into a lake, it was literally decades and decades and decades ago. And through the course of time, it's still, as I see it, as a joint partnership that the city has with that water flow because we do use it for storm water. To reiterate that point, the city built a retention basin above it because of the need to prevent an excess of water crossing the street at that point because it did flood and because of the trash that would flow through that downtown area that included everything from McDonald's and Wendy's, whatever people chose to eat in that particular area. I'm sorry, I tried to get this turned off and I couldn't do it. In that particular area, because I know that when I first was elected 16 years ago, that was a problem. Even at the point when we had a concrete company in that particular area that was throwing toxic waste into that area, it ended up going right down that same route. So, this particular lake, lake that we're talking about is a central point of collecting water and flowing water all the way through the center of Raytown, south of 63rd Street. I don't know if the other small lakes in Raytown are of that same magnitude. I would say if they were, that we should probably care for them too. I do think that it's not our sole proprietorship, that as a city, we don't really own it. But the fact that they built a residential area around a storm drain that's now a lake and that it's filling in and what the repercussions would be if indeed the homeowners were to say, well, we're going to, we can't afford to do it, we're going to throw our hands up and leave it as it is, it would have turned into a swamp. Most of it would fill in, but not all of it would fill in. And we would have a whole different set of problems as a city, dealing with the bugs and et cetera, that would flow into it. I don't think there's a question, because I've talked to the homeowners on numerous occasions, that this is a, no simple project and it's simply not a cheap project. I don't think that what they're asking for is a, a great deal of expenditure. We're not trying to keep the water fresh, we're not, you know, we're just trying to preserve it. And I do think that as a Board of Aldermen, that we need to take a clear look at it. Not just, I mean, this is a, kind of an exemplary problem that we might have in other areas of Raytown. And if they do indeed exist, I don't think that we as a Board of Aldermen should just turn our back and walk away from them. And that we should take a look to see what is the most practical, least expensive route that we can go to keep the water flowing and preserve that lake as possible. Thank you.
Second round, Mr. Ertz?
I guess my question would be getting back to a CID or a community improvement district where the people who live around the lake could, would be paying for that. I know that would have some expense to the city to set that up. Perhaps you or our attorney would have an idea how much is that a, it takes to set up a CID? And since there's an election involved with that, would the homeowners' association, if we tend to go that route, be willing to go around and, is it, I believe it's a ballot has to be done by the, is it 51% of the people around the lake in order to find funding for this operation?
I'll let Joe answer some of the questions of how you would form a CID.
I'll let Joe answer some of the questions, how you would form a CID.
I presented a couple of options to staff today. I think a NID or a Neighborhood Improvement District may be more appropriate for this solution, since we're totally, in my opinion, looking at an alternative farm, taxing the special assessments due to the property owners to be enforced by taxes rather than just the special assessment vehicle. And that will take a petition filed by them with over half the people agreeing to have it done, and then there's a hearing, and then an election by the people subject to that to see if they would impose it. The CID is a little more involved and would involve the creation of a separate governmental entity, and generally, the board members there are appointed by the council, and usually it involves commercial taxing abilities and other things that I wouldn't be present here. We're talking about a purely residential. To go back in time to Alderman Van Buschert's question, I don't know much, but I know a little bit about Wildwood Lake, because I lived there 15 to 20 years and through many of those events you're talking about. And there is a mandatory homes association for the neighborhoods on the south side called Wildwood Lake, and there's two sections of that, subject to a set of restrictive covenants that includes assessment power. And those assessments were used, as I think Mr. Noel was pointing out, for refurbishing of the dam when the heavy rains, I think it was the Plaza floodrains, the first time put the dam's stability in question. The neighborhood raised an extensive amount of money by special assessment the first time the heavy rains came again in '82 or whenever, as I recall. And when those occurred, the second time, lots had to be sold, the clubhouse and the lots were sold to raise the money to repair the dam. My recollection of the siltation removal process was the homes association funded the siltation removal, but the city of Raytown provided trucks, as I believe at that time, to help haul it off. And I know it was not disposed of on homes association property. So, today, it would require there would be a removal permit issued by where it was going to be done, with a plan for how it would be done, and we need to be careful with the entry and loading and removal through the trucks, if that's a viable option now. I don't know, homes association or city would need to jointly look into that. But from a historic basis, that's kind of how the relationship between the city and the homes association worked between '75 and '92, when I lived there.
Not in a work session. Reminder, reminding the Aldermen that a work session format that we got before us, there is no opportunity to hear from the public. That would happen during the, that can either happen after this in the public comment section of the regular Board of Alderman meeting, or when it comes back up for action with the Board. During a work session, it's just for conversation with the staff, so. Were there other questions in here, Mr. Mock?
Yeah. Now, this just involves the upper lake only, not the lower lake.
All we discussed at the time was the upper lake. As discussions go along, it could grow, could shrink. So, all we discussed was just the upper lake at that point.
Second round, Mr. Azure.
In response to the possibility or probability of a homeowners' association participating, would require, of course, the vote of the people that live within that area to do that. The problem, as I see it, is that the lake, the area around the lake, the perimeter, is encompassed probably only about 40% of homes that actually border the lake. When you reach the opposite side of the lake, you have a street that follows the lake, and of course, the dam. I think feasibly, if you took everybody from 63rd all the way to what we call Wildwood, and could put them into, quote, "a homeowners' association that was active and willing to participate," it probably would be realistic. I don't think that would happen, based upon the fact that in the past, because I've been to their picnics, that most of the people who do participate are the people who border the lake, and occasionally, a few other people. That would, that then would not be a solution. If they didn't create a Neighborhood Improvement District, we would still be faced with the fact that the lake is filling in and gradually eroding away from a lake to a swamp. And that's why I think it's important for this city to take a serious look on what we can do as a joint venture to come up with a solution, if indeed, the Neighborhood Improvement District didn't fly. And I would suggest probably that that wouldn't happen.
Okay, other questions or concerns raised from Mr. Noel at this time? Okay, what I'm picking up from this is, Mr. Noel, we'd like for you to look further into, I think we've narrowed it down to a Neighborhood Improvement District, as suggested by Mr. Willerth, as a possibility to be formed. The boundary of that would be something we'd look to, to you, Andy, or Joe, to help us out with that, as well as certainly involving the neighborhood itself. I also heard the question whether or not the lake is a part of the storm water master plan, and I think we need, we could probably use more information on that to determine what our responsibilities may be and how we do rely upon that lake for our storm water concerns. And then I also heard periodic cleaning of the inverts, and I know there's, I think there was mentioned seven or eight of those. And I wrote down periodic, because I think just one time doing it doesn't get it done. I get calls about wanting to get this thing cleaned up, too, so there needs to be a schedule for that that would help with that. Those are the three areas I picked up on. Did I miss anything that we want to ask Andy to look at and get back to us? Because the next, next time we see this, will likely be a recommendation from staff to us on how to handle the situation. At that time, then we would have a public hearing likely, or another opportunity for comments from the public on that to deal with in a, as a board format.
The only thing I didn't quite hear there was, you know, for any type of a vote, people are going to know how much, so I don't know if we-
Right. Thank you.
Have a clear idea. Or even just a good, yeah.
Mr. Hamilton, anything else on that cost?
No, that was my comment. We need to-
That's a good point.
Have information on total cost for the city, particularly.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I add to maybe the requests with the master plan with storm water to see what other lakes might be involved there as well? Because I've gotten requests personally for Ward 1 and Ong Lake and some other examples, and I'd like to see, you know, how they play into that as well, not just this one.
So, how the other lakes contribute?
So, we'll look into the, is Wildwood Lake included in the master plan? Do they account for that storm drainage peak mitigation? Then we'll also look at other lakes throughout the cities. So, if we are going to set a precedent, we know how many other lakes-
Exactly. We want to know what's coming our way when we set that precedent, so.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Mock, do you have anything? Was there something else? Mr. Hamilton, you had everything? Okay, any other, any other questions or guidance for staff on this? Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Noel.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to Item B. Ask Mr. Benson to present the discussion regarding proposed donation from the Raytown Garden Club in the form of a Blue Star Memorial Sign.
This, my, this is just an overview for informational purposes and to get any questions out on the table that may need, that you may have as this project moves forward. As you just mentioned, the Raytown Garden Club has offered to purchase a Blue Star Memorial Sign for the city and donate it to the city for installation. They originally met with the park board to discuss this. The park board looked at different locations and recommended that it be placed in the Pocket Park at 63rd Street, 63rd Street and Raytown Road. Following that recommendation, Kevin Boji, Parks Director for the Raytown Parks Department, and I met with a couple of members from the Garden Club who were spearheading this to discuss about, to discuss that location. There were some, there are some locational issues that need to be addressed while that, one, that's, that's why we call that, or is commonly referred to as a pocket park. It's technically not a park in the sense that, or other city parks. The property is owned by the city and it is maintained by the Parks Department, but it's not dedicated as a formal park. So, that's one issue that would, the Board would have to approve that location for placement of the sign. The second aspect is locating it, where to locate it within that space, because there's the holiday lighting and other things that occur in that property, as well as other landscaping and other items that are already installed in the property. We also discussed, instead of the Pocket Park, the cities, they were not aware that the city has obtained a transportation enhancement grant for Central Business District for streetscaping. We talked about the possibility of, when we do the design or the design is done for that streetscaping, looking at the possibility of incorporating it into the overall streetscape in the downtown area at a different location, or even add on Highway 350 as part of the bicycle and pedestrian trail, that the city received a transportation enhancement grant and place it along the trail somewhere where it's visible as well, and somewhere along that location as well. The members from the Garden Club were agreeable. They initially were of the thought to have it placed by this fall in anticipation of Veterans Day in November. And they recognized that that may be pushing the timeframe a little bit quickly to get that done, with the possibility of incorporating it either into the downtown streetscape or out on Highway 350 as the part of the bicycle and pedestrian trail. They were willing to wait beyond this fall until next year during the, when those two projects are further along with the design, and they can have, be involved in reviewing the plans for the, for each of those other projects and see if a better location, because the Pocket Park will still be there, obviously. So, that's the background that we just wanted to provide to you tonight. If you have any questions, or the potential is that as part of the downtown streetscape or on Highway 350, it potentially would be located within the street right of way or highway right of way, and that's, that would be a difference of saying outside the street right of way in the Pocket Park or some other city-owned property. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Ms. Nelson?
I noticed that this, the Blue Star Memorial Sign was only designed to pay tribute to the United States Armed Forces, and so, are there other things like this for the other branches of the military?
That I don't, I, to be honest, I don't know. I assumed, how I interpreted the, this monument was to all the armed forces, whether it be Army, Navy-
Oh, okay.
-or Air Force, whatever it may be.
That's how I understood it as well.
Okay. Because that was my concern, is if we had, you know, just one of them, then we might have other ones coming and wanting them, too. So, if this is all-inclusive, that's-
Yeah, and in that line of thought, one thing I didn't mention was, when they visit with the park board, it's my understanding, more of the initial thoughts was to incorporate it as part of the Veterans Oriole Plaza at Coleman Livinggood Park.
Oh, uh-huh.
And it just, they couldn't find a good location where it would fit and not look out of place or be totally lost, among other things that are in that area, so.
Okay. And the streetscape, do we have kind of tentative, got a timeline on that, when we're looking to get that started, completed?
Andy Noel and I met late last week on the RFP, Request for Proposals, that will be going out to select a consultant to do, to do the design work. We anticipate getting that out by the end of this month, and a selection made shortly thereafter, with design beginning, or a contract, once the contract's brought back before you all are approved, starting the design work late this year and being finished early by sometime spring or next year.
So, the design work?
The design work, and then construction, the funds have to be obligated by next summer, and I forget the exact date, but it's the middle of next year. So, obligation doesn't mean that the construction will be completed, but to have a, by spring or early summer, have to be going out for bid for construction.
So, if they don't put this memorial at the Pocket Park, is the Garden Club still willing to participate with that park?
Very much so, yes.
Oh, good.
They, they were very much, in fact, the timing is, is good in the sense that it allows our design, we can provide this information or this information on the sign to whoever is selected to do the design, and they may actually be able to find a spot that's very visible, and it adds to the, to the streetscape as part of the downtown or out on Highway 350.
I think that's really good, that the Garden Club is getting involved with that small Pocket Park.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Buschert?
I just, I think the Pocket Park location would be a fantastic location for that. It's right in the heart of the city, if it logistically will work out where the sign will go there and still utilize that area for other, you know, for other activities. But I, I see that as an ideal location.
Mr. Mock?
Yeah, the Pocket Park is a great idea. The only thing is, is the property itself can be sold, correct?
It, yes. It, the, when that property was, as I recall, ownership was transferred from the Chamber of Commerce to the city. The intent was that's a temporary park that until further development occurs and that property could be developed. And if that were to occur and the sign ends up in that location, the sign would have to be relocated to wherever that may, the next location may be. And we did discuss that with the Garden Club members we met with, and they're aware of that.
Okay. That's what I was wanting to know. Thanks.
The crystal ball's not working real well to see what could eventually happen with that, but if we have to move that sign, that's also a good problem for our downtown. But in the meantime, we do need a place for it. I'm excited, as Charlotte said, I'm excited that the Garden Club has joined us as a partner on this, and certainly look forward to more of those, more of those partnerships throughout the city. So, I think it's a good thing. If we have to move it, that's also not a bad thing, either, so, later on.
Right, right.
Further questions or conversation on this topic? We're all in heated agreement.
Okay.
Okay, I think that that's gonna end the study session for tonight. We're gonna start the regular Board of Alderman meeting at 7 o'clock, so we've got about 13 minutes to get ready for that, and we've got a good number of people showing up already, so let's be ready at 7 to go for the Board of-